Good morning. Welcome to our October 2nd Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you all for coming, and I will call the meeting to order. I ask Craig Slay, would you pray for us, Craig?
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for giving us this time to come together to consider what's in the best interest of all of our citizens here in Rankin County. Father, thank you for this place we call home, how it's blessed abundantly, Father, by your hand. And thank you for how you take good care of us, Lord, protect us. You provide us the freedoms that we enjoy, the freedom to come together, participate in our government. Father, that's a freedom that we should never take for granted, and we don't. Father, thank you for that, that privilege that we have. Father, I pray that as you give us guidance and wisdom, these men will feel it in a very real way, or they'll know that you are, you have elevated them and put them in this position of authority. I pray, Father, that they will feel gratified to have that authority, Father, that they will feel a sense of responsibility, and that they will carry out their responsibility well. Give us the protection from the men and women who service every day. Thank you for their sacrifice and their service to our community in Christ's name. Amen.
Great men. Thank you, Craig. I want to start off and recognize the people on the board that are here today. We don't normally do that, but most all of y'all know who they are, but maybe some people don't. Brad Calhoun, Daniel Cross, myself, Steve, and Jay Bishop. And our staff, I'm not going to go through of everybody, but we have, I think, one of the best staffs in more than the state, and thank y'all for all the work y'all do. Let's go to our public comments, and we got one of our heroes in the office, Mr. Bubba Brantley. We want to recognize the Rankin County District Attorney's Office for all that they do, and they were recognized by the Bureau of Investigations as a top District Attorney's Office 2023. Thank you, sir. Can you come forward?
Come on. Ms. Redana Burns is coming as well, because she runs that office, and everybody does. And she makes Bubba look so much better, just and everybody else as well. Gentlemen, it is an incredible privilege for us to host Bubba this morning in recognition of an award that was recently received by the Office of the District Attorney for the 20th District. This award was in recognition of Bubba's office and our district being selected as the top office in the entire state by Mississippi Highway Patrol and the Mississippi Bureau of Investigation. And so it is an incredible honor to have Bubba with us today, representing the office. It won't surprise anybody that we would have had the entire office here to share in this moment of recognition, but they are actually in court, working first day of the term, as always. They don't ever check up, they're just constantly working. And so they had to send Bubba down here by himself to represent the office, and Ms. Redana, of course, who is so involved in that office and provides such meaningful support to that office. And so, Bubba, tell the guys a little bit more about that award, and share with the board anything you want to share. We are really, really proud of our ADA's office.
First of all, thank you so much, and Craig, thanks for pointing out. Today is the first day of the term, and we're a little shorthanded today, plus we have two judges today, so all of our, most of our ADAs are up in the courtroom handling a lot of cases today. I know I've got one or two out at Malota, teaching classes today and tomorrow. That's one of the things we do that nobody realizes, but we're the ones that this district teaches them the law out there when they have their basic courses and whatnot, even their advanced courses. So there's so many people to thank, law enforcement throughout the county, the sheriff's office, the municipalities throughout the county. We've been, we're really blessed, the citizens in the county, and I've said this before, I can't say it enough, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, I thank the Board of Supervisors for everything that you do. We are as good as you let us be. We have, one thing I was told when I first came into office is, we want to be the best District Attorney's Office in the state, we want to be the safest county in the state, and we won't take no for an answer, and whatever resources you need, we will provide. And I've been here every year asking for resources, and you've provided them every time. And this particular award is given by the state of Mississippi, from the top on down, from the Highway Patrol to Mississippi Bureau of Investigation, to the Sex Fender Registry Center. We've had a really, really good year, we've had a really, really good term. Little Birds told me we got some more awards coming down the pipe. I think we're going to have Trial of the Year coming up. If we, if we do, that particular case is just a prime example of what you do. We brought in witnesses from several states, Tennessee, Atlanta, Maryland, Virginia, Arkansas, Oklahoma. That's not a cheap deal, when you fly these people in and put them up for the night or two to testify in these cases. That particular case was a 30-plus-year-old serial rapist.
Oh, yeah.
Throughout the southeastern United States that, that law enforcement here solved. And we were successful in prosecuting it, and it was also the first case in the world, it was the first case in the United States of America that was ever tried and won using forensic investigative genetic genealogy. We had no evidence who committed this rape, and we used science to solve it, and what it turned out being was a serial rapist that had been raping women across four states for 30-plus years. So that all comes back to you providing us the resources to do what we do, and we love doing what we do. If you ever need anything from us, please let us know, and thank y'all so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bubba.
Thank y'all. I think everybody knows that our District Attorney's Office does make Rankin County great. We have a lot of different areas that exceed, and of course, our District Attorney's Office is one of them. Let's see, moving on down, that's all I have listed for public comments. Is there anybody else in the room that has a public comment? All right. Let's move on, old business. Do we have any, I see our September 15th and 28th.
Send me a motion, yeah, motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
I'll second it.
Daniel makes a motion, Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes to approve the old business consent agenda.
And make a motion to approve.
Daniel makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Caroline's Item 6 for the end-of-year reports.
All right. Daniel reviews our agenda and sees the items listed, makes a motion to approve it as it is. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes. Ms. Heron, do you have somebody that can do the same thing?
Yeah, I was going, hey, I was going down the same line. Hey, I'll make a motion on Item 7, for Items A and B, to authorize the advertisement of bids for the unit system, and also the approval of copier issue on Items A and B.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Daniel and a second by Calhoun to approve these items 1 through 9 under Bridget's A section, authority to advertise term bids, and B, approval of copier contract with Rico USA for the Juvenile Detention Center. I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Bridget.
Mike Harrison, do you have somebody that can do this?
No, somebody will do it for me. David.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
How y'all doing?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion for Item A, for work accomplished and scheduled for October of 2023.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Daniel to approve work accomplished and scheduled for 2023, well, this is September, and Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
That's where I draw my line. We get to these fiber installation companies?
That's it.
Well, we got B and C, which is Comcast. We take both of those together, one of them is District 1 and one is District 2, I mean 4. District 4 will be installed on Highway 80 at Goody Road, and then District 1 will be on 43 Highland Drive.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Calhoun. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Mike?
Yes, sir.
We have had to inspect these layers, bores, whatever they are.
Yes, sir.
Do you still have a staff that you had that would go behind these people and inspect?
Yes, sir. We still have a staff that goes by and inspects the work that they're doing to make sure they're placing it in the right place.
And covering the holes up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hey, and Mike, your plan on putting somebody out there with those people has worked. I mean, that's, the adjustments you made on the fiber installation stuff has made a huge difference in the area, so I can't tell you how much I appreciate you having to pull somebody off a crew to dedicate it to that, but it's made a difference in these neighborhoods, so.
It has, it's made a difference all the way across the county, I mean, Daniel, because now we're getting it where they say we do, and if we have an issue, and it's actually brought us closer together, if we do have problems, that we can get a hold of these utilities and solve.
Well, the adjustments you made in that was fantastic, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we had a motion by Daniel, second by my, I mean, excuse me, excuse me, Calhoun.
Can't give me that.
You're right, Calhoun, second by myself. We had a discussion, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, C is another similar one.
We took both of them.
Oh, you took them together? Okay.
Yes.
All right, all right, we approved B and C at the same time.
We done with Mike.
All right. Mike, didn't take long.
No.
You done? Hey, wait, Mike?
Yep.
We talked before the meeting a little bit about our roads, and we've got, what, 1,000 miles nearly of roads in Rankin County, county roads. Any asphalt road, or all asphalt roads are experiencing problems.
Yes, sir.
Is there, can you look at a method that we can cover the worst ones with just a seal? Because if we get rain and freezing weather in January and February, and we hadn't done anything, some of these roads have cracks that are that wide and a foot deep in the ground. Can you tell us at maybe the next meeting, what economical way we can try to seal these roads?
So actually, we were looking at a product, Steve, we've been using it, Crack Seal, but then they've got a product called Damascus Crack Seal, which is a little bit different, but it'll go in, you can seal the cracks, and it'll look like a big wide stripe on the road, and it'll actually hold the asphalt together, unless the earth moves, you know, it won't hold it, but I think we can get a lot of these cracks sealed up. It'll be in our term bid that y'all just approved with Bridget. We've already implicated it in that to move forward on these cracks that we have from this severe dry weather.
Is that, I don't, that method, it's almost manual?
Yes, sir.
Is that as economical as some of our other, and maybe you can't put enough of that other?
Well, you just got, you got to get them cracked sealed before you can put the other treatments in, but I'll be coming to y'all here in the next few weeks. I've actually got our new budget set.
Yeah.
And we've been looking at doing some pavement preservation stuff, like you're talking about doing across the county to seal some of these cracks. So I'll be coming to y'all here in the next few weeks with all that information.
Now, we, we do have, we had our roads in pretty good shape.
Yes.
In most places, and I'm afraid by first next spring or summer that they're not going to be.
Yes, sir.
But anyhow, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tim Porter.
Morning. The first item we have, Item A, Mr. President, is Ventnor's Crossing, Stage 3. We recommend an approval of the construction drawings. That's a District 2 development, this will be the last phase of it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Daniel makes a motion.
Second.
Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Item 2, Mr. President, is on, is on Willbrook Road. It's Willbrook Drainage Improvements. We're requesting authority to advertise that project. That's some road improvements, some drainage improvements on Willbrook Road in Castle Woods.
Yeah, let me, I want to make one comment on that before I make a motion to approve that thing. This is a situation that we were sued on a year and a half ago, and it's the same situation as we've made clear across the county with the good work of Tim and Slay in regards to not being able to do work on private property, that we can't go outside the roadway. So the quick summation of this, this was an issue to where they've got a storm drain that's collapsed off the road right of way, on private property, maybe, I don't know, Timmy, how far is that? 500 yards? 200 yards?
Couple hundred yards, yeah.
Right, so a couple hundred yards off the right of way, where a pipe's collapsed. And this is a situation where they put in a newspaper on us where Mr. Grogan went and purchased a lot that was being finished up on Community Bank side, right? And came into the play that somehow, it was already collapsed, but wanted to put it back on the county. So what this is doing is, we told them originally that we can do work along the road right of way, around the storm drain, that was there, and we would make some improvements on that, but we cannot go 200 yards inland on private property, just as the other legal actions we've had taken against us, to do legal work on private property, which we cannot do, and replace this 200 yards of pipe for them, because that's outside of what the law allows us to do. He wanted to argue with us and sue us and all, and he spent a good bit of money on that and tried to even bring the homeowners association into it from the same point, but it still stands that we can't go on private property. So the work that we're authorizing Timmy to advertise is the same thing we said at the very beginning. We'll do some work on the storm box on the road, inside the right of way, inside our scope. Has nothing to do with the erroneous litigation that they've put against the county on this same topic. This is only dealing with the storm box that's inside that area. Having said that, this is not going to fix their overall problem of water not going into the storm pipe 200 feet inland, 200 yards inland, to get to the storm. It's just going to come on top of the ground and then maybe work its way into the box.
Are we still going to have water top of the road?
Possibly.
This will make it better. We can't guarantee that it's not, there's not going to be some water in the road, simply because the water is now coming to the road on top of the ground as opposed to being in the storm system.
So the work that we're proposing to do, could we go back and fix later down the road? Is it going to be more cost-effective to wait to do it later, or what we're planning on doing now, can we later down the road, once we get legislation passed, be able to go address this?
Nothing, nothing, what we're doing now could stand on its own, so it will, it'll be fine. If that's done, it won't adversely affect this.
They would still tie in our storm box.
Right.
Regardless of how they replaced the pipe or decided to replace the pipe on private property. Yep. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to authorize the advertisement of this on Willbrook.
All right. Daniel makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Item C, Mr. President, is on the Mill Creek Bank Stabilization Project. We recommend an approval of Contract Change Order Number 1 for Program Element 205 in the amount of $414,000 for additional riprap, filter, fabric, and excess excavation.
All right, so let me, let me hit on one thing on that, to start with on this. The overall budget that we planned for that project was what?
I believe it was like 5, 5.2?
5.2 million. And the bid came in to do the project was what?
The bid was 1.7, the kind of furnishing the rocks, so all told, about right at 3 million.
So we're still 2 million under, right? What this does is, at the point in which we decided to do rock, one of the things our lovely Corps of Engineers said, and they came back and looked, was the high watermark of the water was only as far down as we could go with the rock. They've now come back and adjusted, Tim and them shot on a really conservative note that the high watermark should be here on the creek, because we could only go down the rock to that spot. When the Corps came in, they said Tim was too conservative, you could go down further, so it's going to allow you to put more rock down in the creek itself. So what this does is, because we're still 2 million dollars under the budget of this project, this is adding additional rock to the spot in which the Corps came in and said you can go a little bit lower, is what that's doing, so.
And this is the ARPIS project.
Absolutely, 100%. Which, we've got the fantastic President of the United States who sent us ARPIS money, along with the legislature that's come in and matched this money. So it's a $5 million budgeted project that we're still a million and a half under, so y'all take the spin wherever you want to go. A great Scott Berry can lay his hands on 1.5 million and navigate two more votes and study dolphins in the reservoir after that one, so.
All right. I agree with about 99% of that, the.
Dolphins in the reservoir, what you're up for?
Well, that or the great president. All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Daniel makes a motion. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Item D, Mr. President, is on the Andrew Jackson Circle Project. This is a District 1 project. We're recommending approval of Contract Change Order Number 1 in the amount of $43,200 for additional asphalt for widening and crushstone for the railroad crossing. Two, two different items here, the crushstone and the asphalt. On the crushstone, we added a new crossing in this project, and when we got, constructing the crossing, the railroad made us fill everything inside the right of way with crushstone as opposed to using fill material and then crushstone on the top, like we would normally build a road, so we're adding crushstone for that reason. The asphalt winding is, another part of this project is part of the safety improvements that involved MDOT was that we're, we're closing a railroad crossing. So it made Andrew Jackson Circle, in essence, a dead end. And so we were, we put an access, y'all may not be familiar with it, but we were able to put an access at the end of the road out to Laughlin Road, which is the closest perpendicular road to it. There was talk about that maybe being a gated emergency access at one time, because we're right up against the railroad right of way, we're actually, part of the road's on the railroad right of way, and weren't able to make it very wide. We set it up at 16-foot. Now, the thought is that it could be a two-way street, no more traffic, because it's on Andrew Jackson Circle, if we widen it to 18-foot. So this change order is just adding the additional asphalt to widen it from 16 to 18-foot. The paving hasn't been done yet.
Second.
All right. Jay Bishop makes a motion to approve. Daniel makes a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
First item under my section, Mr. President, is to set a public hearing for October the 16th for Mississippi Storage LLC. This is a conditional use permit with a dimensional variance request. It's a District 3 property.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to set those hearings.
I'll second.
Can you tie A and B together?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Daniel makes motion to set A and B. Jay, second. Any other discussion?
Ah.
Well, we tied them together and we're approving them.
Yes, sir.
All right, Daniel and Jay, and now all.
All in favor of me. I mean, I jumped you, sorry about that.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. A and B are approved, are set.
All right. Mr. President, Item C is our need to conduct a public hearing that's set for today. This is on the Crossgates Crossing Amended Tax Increment Financing Plan. So at this time, I will open that public hearing. I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak on the matter of the Crossgates Crossing Amended Tax Increment Financing Plan that has been proffered by the Board of Supervisors? Anyone here to speak on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in public hearing on that matter. It'd be appropriate for us to close that public hearing, and I'll do so. Item D, then, because no one has spoken in opposition to the public hearing, it's appropriate for the Board to consider a resolution, the potential adoption of a resolution that approves the implementation of the Tax Increment Financing Plan as amended for the Crossgates Crossing Development Project. This is a combination project between the City of Brandon and Rankin County with respect to a TIF project that we're familiar with. Your amendment to that document is to increase the amount of the debt that will be serviced through the Tax Increment Financing Plan, and to authorize the, the issuance of the bonds, and to authorize the county's participation in the financing of those bonds. And so I would ask the Board to consider and potentially adopt that resolution. It'd be appropriate to have a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Calhoun makes a motion to approve. Daniel seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. In light of the Board's action with respect to Item D, which was the adoption of the resolution, we need to further consider and potentially adopt an interlocal cooperation agreement. This is between the county and the City of Brandon, and it allows for the pledge and the participation with respect to the ad valorem increment financing for the debt service. This is a standard thing that we do whenever there is a TIF plan that involves both the city and the county. I just need a motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion.
Yep, second.
Calhoun makes motion that we enter into a local agreement with Brandon where a pledge of amount of debt servicing that has been documented will occur. Daniel seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Okay. And for the record, the, the county's pledge is as understood, it is 20 mils, which is in the neighborhood of 50% of our ad valorem, okay? So that's, that's become a standard policy that we have adopted and we are now utilizing, so I wanted to clarify that.
Craig?
Yes, sir.
Just for the record?
Yes, sir.
This discussion and reviews has gone on for several months, and it comes to today for a vote.
Yes, sir.
This is not just, we're talking about it and bam, it's a lot of work has gone into this, and I think our people here that have helped.
Chris Gerson Associates, and of course, Miss Sue Fairbank, we know well, who is assisting with the City of Brandon on documentation and helping us to navigate through this. Yeah, so not to put too fine a point on it, Steve, but by virtue of some mistakes that I made, we're have, we've had to talk about this one exceedingly more than normal, because we, we thought we were going to talk about it last board meeting, and that was my mistake on not having the agenda queued up for us to handle that. So it got pushed off to today. This is probably about the fifth or sixth time we've talked about this.
Well, we're in good shape, so.
Yep.
All right.
Item F, gentlemen, is an authority reimbursed, for issuance of a reimbursement check. You see, it's a modest amount of money, $566.66. This will be payable to, it's an outfit that services mortgages for all amounts paid to redeem property associated with PIN 83244. It was inadvertently sold at land sale, and it's just a coding issue that we had, so we need to get the money back in the hands of the mortgage servicer.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Daniel makes motion to approve. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes.
Gentlemen, I actually have two items. Item G here, I'm going to have one more that I'll add, that's a late add, and I apologize for that, but first, Item G, I need you guys to walk with me through an assessment protest that we received. This has to do with our Gulf South Pipeline issue, and this is for tax years 2017 to 2022. This is an entity called Magnum Gas, Magnum Gas. They are a brokerage, and I'm indebted to both my assessor's office and my collector's office, trying to help me navigate through these issues. This is a recurring theme that we're having. A little bit of background, you, you guys recall that, that the assessor picked up on the fact that the cavern inflow wood that is owned by Gulf South Pipeline is being utilized not just for storage of natural gas that belongs to Gulf South Pipeline, they use the cavern as a warehouse, and they hold that gas for innumerable customers across the southeast United States. They, they use the cavern as a storage facility for natural gas, and these customers have access to this natural gas to supply the needs of their residents or other customers or other customers when they have need for natural gas as the weather gets cooler. So it's a, it's a repository. It's a warehouse in every sense of the word. Because that gas does not belong to Gulf South Pipeline, but belongs to the customers of Gulf South Pipeline, Gulf South Pipeline is responsible to report to the tax assessor's office who their customers are that they're holding gas for in the cavern and how much gas is being held for each customer. And that allows the assessor's office to conduct an assessment of personal property taxes for that gas. That has not happened in Rankin County since Gulf South Pipeline has been holding this gas for customers. That assessment process has not happened because Gulf South refused to tell the assessor who their customers are and how much gas they're holding. They came up with some cockamamie excuse for not providing that information. And that instigated a process where we wanted to take issue with Gulf South for refusing to provide that data. Okay? What we've come to learn is that, for the most part, the customers of Gulf South Pipeline do not know that they are holding gas in Rankin County. They are as mystified by that as we are. And.
We were.
We were. Now invariably, what they will tell us is, we don't know where the gas is, we just know that when we need it, it shows up. And so what we've discovered is that so many of these customers, and I'm going to read a few names here in a minute and you'll start getting the idea. So many of these customers are little cities scattered across Louisiana, Florida, and Alabama. And they have companies, agents that work for them to help them get their gas when they need it. And so Magnum Gas is a broker. They are a middleman between Gulf South and these little cities. And this broker then takes responsibility to make sure that the little cities get the gas they need when they need it, and the broker handles all the paperwork and all the dealing with Gulf South. And so we've had, we've had a Dickens of a time because we've had to put these little cities on notice that they owe personal property taxes for years back. And they go, we don't know what you're talking about. We don't have any gas in Rankin County. And so it's been this process, you cannot imagine how much work that the assessor and the collector has had to go through to get this set up. I can't give them enough praise for the hard work that they have done to get us to this point. So here's what's going on with Magnum Gas. They've got probably 10 or 15 little cities that they represent as a broker. And we have told Magnum Gas, you've got to provide us with the documentation of what each of your little cities is holding in that cavern as of a particular date. You're going to have to provide that data to us. And so we've been waiting and waiting and waiting, and finally, I'm prepared now to tell you guys, they didn't like what we came up with, which was taking the information that Gulf South gave us and the maximum capacity of storage that was available to each of their customers. And so that's how we assessed it, using Gulf South's data. And so Magnum said, well, we don't like Gulf South's data, we want to give you our own data. And then we'll figure out what the volumes are. So we said, okay, we'll do that. Give us the data. And so the gentleman with Magnum Gas has provided some data, but not very much.
Of course.
And so what I've got for me today and what I'm going to introduce into the record is an assessment protest that has been calculated and placed into a format that's understandable. And so what, what it is, is, and I'll just give you a few of the names here, the City of Alto, Louisiana, the City of Gary, Louisiana, the City of Huntington, Texas, the City of Huxley, Alabama, the City of Newton, Alabama, the City of Pineland, Louisiana, the City of Easton, Texas. These are, these are the little towns, many of them are less than 5,000 residents.
So are they taxable?
Yes, they are absolutely taxable. They're not.
But in Mississippi, they're not.
In Mississippi, they would be exempt. Our constitution provides for that. Any municipality is exempt from local taxation. And so, but these are all out-of-state entities, and so they're all subject to personal property taxes in Rankin County. And so what we've got here is, I've got a document that shows in two different columns, and again, I'm going to introduce this into the record. It shows two different columns of the volume of gas that has been asserted by Magnum on behalf of each of these little entities and the volume of gas that has been reported to us by Gulf South Pipeline, the holder, the warehouseman. What I'm asking you to do is to accept my recommendation and the assessor's recommendation, that we accept the data from Gulf South, which is the warehouseman. They are in the best position to note, to accept that information as our assessment record and to document that the assessment will be based on the Gulf South information. And that's what I would like for a motion to reflect, that we accept the assessment as determined by the assessor based on information provided by Gulf South Pipeline. I just need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Calhoun and a second by Daniel to accept the assessment that we've received from Gulf South and use that compilation in our figures to.
Yes.
Figure out what the taxes will be for this gas. It's been held for Magnum Gas.
That's correct.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
You'll see that you're also authorizing the creation of tax bills related to what you just did. And so that's a part of the motion as well, Mr. President.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, if I could, I would like to get you to add one item for me, and that is to acknowledge receipt of an objection to assessment as to PPIN 15608 and PPIN 15622. This is from CenterPoint Energy, and it relates, again, to the Gulf South Pipeline. CenterPoint Energy, it has been in discussions with my, with my office about an assessment that was delivered to a broker on their behalf, and they are intervening in their capacity as CenterPoint and taking it away from the broker to work with us on coming up with an appropriate assessment. All you're doing here is acknowledging receipt of their objection. It's a timely objection in writing that's been received from CenterPoint. I just need us to acknowledge receipt.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Calhoun makes a motion. Jay Bishop seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, I have one item in executive that won't take five minutes.
Hey Craig, why don't you just go up there? Question, can you give us any kind of updates on anything from like energy? I mean, I know they're doing a lot in the Madison area and.
Yes, sir.
We've been trying to work with them, try to get some stuff in Rankin County.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Brad. It's always dangerous whenever I'm invited to talk about Entergy.
That's your favorite topic.
At a public meeting, isn't it?
I think it's your favorite topic.
So recently, there's several things going on with Entergy that I'm aware of. One is that they are, Brad, they are getting ready to install some utility service on one of our county public roads. It's called Levi Cooper Road. And they've gone out, and I found out on Friday, that they've actually gone out and they've purchased some additional right of way attendant to the county's public right of way, which is a prescriptive right of way. They've purchased some right of way along Levi Cooper. And I've seen their plan for installation of the utility service. And Tim, what do you call that? Hopscotch? They are, they are intending to crisscross down the road with their utility service. And so we're stepping in now, and we've, I've had the title abstractor go through and determine ownership and open deeds of trust and that type of thing for the purpose of establishing additional county public right of way along Levi Cooper so that we can push Entergy out away from our roadwork and avoid a potential conflict later. And so we have engaged them. They know that we're watching. They have not actually installed their utility service yet. So we are at a point now where if they want to be cooperative and avoid additional expense later, they, they should work with us to see to it that they don't locate that utility service in such a way that it impacts our roadwork. And so we're making, we're trying to make that effort to have that done. The other thing that's recently come up is that, and we expect there to be some announcements pretty soon, if they haven't already, that Madison County, Madison County, through their economic development activities, will likely secure one of the largest industrial economic projects in the state probably since Nissan. And so once again, we see the Economic Development, MDA, and others focusing their effort and their energy in Madison County, which has been a consistent pattern through the years. It's troubling to me that the Rankin County continues to be kept on the back burner for large projects. One reason, a specific reason given for why the Madison site was chosen when there were plenty of other options available, is that there is insufficient power to supply the need for electricity for a use of that size in Rankin County. In other words, these things work together. So when our energy supplier, our monolithic monopoly energy supplier chooses to install electric service wherever they choose, and it's not Rankin County, that has a deep and material impact on the viability of our sites for uses. If you don't have the electric power available, you're not going to be in the running for these large economic development projects. And so we're, we're getting passed over again, no thanks to our friends who provide power. We are continuing to fight the good fight with the Public Service Commission over the most recent rate increase that Entergy apparently secured, but it's still in doubt. We appealed the PSC's granting of that rate increase to the Supreme Court, and that matter is, is teed up for a review and hearing by the Supreme Court. And so my hope is that the Supreme Court will see it our way and will determine that the most recent rate increase granted to Entergy was improper, that it was not appropriately documented, and that they did not handle that process correctly, and that the, the staff of the PSC should have denied that rate request. And so that's what's standing before the Supreme Court right now. And our hope is that we will have a good result for the citizens of Rankin County. I continue to ask for, any chance that I get, opportunities to sit down with the people in Entergy and address these issues with them, and they refuse to meet with us. They refuse to meet with us. About the only time that Entergy ever comes across my radar screen these days is when they're running their commercials about how good they are.
He must have it bad today.
Craig?
Yes, sir.
Is that what it was?
Thank you. And I want to say this for the situation of Madison development and Rankin. We do see a lot of, or several big developments. And when I look, we're paying for some of it.
Absolutely.
If you travel 43, Highway 43, from the county line of Rankin and Madison at the reservoir to Pele Hachi, I promise you, you won't travel that way again if you have an option. The road is tore up, and it's because of the increased number of 18-wheelers that are going back and forth to Nissan. They're cutting through, and I mean, it's legal, but that, I challenge anybody in the room to drive that road, it's probably eight or 10 miles.
With a trailer.
Well, if you're, if you know how to drive really well, pull a trailer. But it's a bad, bad road. And all my people that live that have, not have to, need to drive on 43 to get home or go to work, go to school. And that's just one little example of Rankin County pays and supports these other counties, a lot of their institutions and some things that have been going on for years that we're finally pulling away from. We need to have our own business here. If they're going to tear our roads up, let us have them.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right. Anything else that I covered all that around?
I think so.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll keep y'all posted.
Yes, sir. How you doing there? Well, since you got up.
Good morning, gentlemen. Item A under my section is authority to publish the detailed revenue and expense report for solid waste for fiscal year '23, statutory requirement.
Yes, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Daniel makes motion. Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Another statutory requirement is authority to publish the Board of Supervisors' travel for fiscal year '23.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Calhoun makes motion. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
All right. And item C is acknowledge receipt from the Department of Revenue that Rankin County has complied with. The criteria is set forth in Section 2739329. The certification authorizes the county to expend the avails of the windmill levy collected for '23 roll year in any previous years under the above cut sections.
Yep, same move.
All right, Daniel makes motion.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
All right. One item of additional business that I had popped up last, late last week, and I'm asking to add authority for staff, we're not sure which staff yet, to travel to a broadband conference Thursday and Friday of this week. It's in Jackson, but we just need authority to travel there.
So I need to put that on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add.
Yep, second.
All right. Calhoun makes motion to add to the agenda, travel to Jackson for broadband, broadband conference. I mean, two employees, I don't believe there's any overnight.
No, sir.
Okay. All right, Calhoun made the motion. Daniel seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, it's added. Now, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, same way. Calhoun makes a motion. Daniel seconds to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And then on the additional business, I just need, I guess, get Tim to run out and look at a drainage pipe that's coming off of Deer Ridge that's got some sink places in it and.
This is actually further to our stormwater management plan, and so this is in keeping with what we're doing anyway. This is also being queued up as a full federal reimbursement potential. So we need to, we need to get a cost estimate so we can confer with our friends at NRCS, and they are likely going to be able to pay for this fully.
Okay. All right, do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Calhoun makes motion for Tim to investigate and give us an estimate of this problem at Creek.
Well, it's already on.
You already got it here?
It's on the additional business.
Oh, that's what that is?
Okay, the Richland Creek Study. All right.
I'll second it.
Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
I thought that was something else, the Richland Creek Study.
All right, do we have any other additional business?
Brad and myself and Trey Jones and a couple of our Wagner folks are headed to Washington, DC tomorrow. We'll get back on Thursday, but we have a multitude of meetings set up. You guys heard over the weekend that the House passed the short-term CR, the Clean CR, and then the Senate went ahead and overwhelmingly passed the Clean CR. So there's 45 days of additional government spending available in DC. And so everybody that we were thinking might cancel out on us is now back on the drawing board, so we need to go and conduct our meetings that are already scheduled. So we'll leave tomorrow, we'll get back on Thursday. I need authority, Mr. President, this is an add item. I would need authority to pay the travel-related experience for the Board Attorney Supervisor and Federal Legislative Consultants to travel to DC for first week of October 2023.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second.
Daniel makes a motion, this is to add.
Yes, sir.
The request to travel to DC and pay travel-related expenses for two or three of our employees. That's an add. Do I have a motion? Oh, Jay?
Well, you got a motion to add, right?
Yeah. Do you have the motion to add?
Yep.
All right, we got, Jay makes a motion, I'm going to say Daniel seconds it to add. All in favor? Any opposed?
I'll make the same thing to approve.
Second.
Okay, all right. This time, I'm going to say that Daniel made the motion. This time, I'm going to say that Daniel made the motion, and Jay seconds to approve this travel-related request. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, we, one item in executive, which is a potential purchase of additional property. This is related to our acquisitions with respect to Lawrence Byham Parkway. And so we've got our friends with Iroh here with us today to discuss those situations with the board. That'll be in executive. Before we get to that, there's one quick update, and it's always dangerous to suggest that we need to hear from Brother Mike Word, but I wanted you guys to have an update on Motorola, on our situation with respect to our weather sirens. And so, Mike, you can help address to the board what recent activity we
Sure, absolutely. So Ryan, our Motorola rep, our account manager with Motorola, had a meeting with the WCC on Friday. He has assured me that the WCC and Motorola are going to absorb the cost to make our, and I'll put this in quotations, early warning sirens whole. So the $4,500 we spoke about last week, that bill is still going to come to Rankin County, but he assures me they're going to take care of it. I told him that I needed that papered up and forwarded to our board attorney before they did any work whatsoever. Me personally, I do not believe that what they're going to do by going over and turning them on is going to work. I believe they're going to have to be re-flashed, the CPUs on them, and historically in the past, that's the issues with our sirens. I don't think they're going to come back online, but that's on them and we'll see what happens. So that's part one. Part two, we talked about the updates. The WCC has told Motorola, our account manager, they have basically no intentions of paying for our upgrade, and so we're going to be responsible for that. I told you in my estimation it was going to be between $150,000 and a quarter million dollars, and I was wrong on that. It's $100,000 is what the cost accursed is. However, that's annually. So we pay $300,000 a year now for our maintenance agreement, and it would go up by $100,000. So that would have us paying $400,000 a year to Motorola for our maintenance agreement and upgrades on our radio system. I have told Ryan that he needs to prepare himself to come in here and speak with you guys and explain options to us, and what those options may be, and what happens if we do option one, two, three, or four? What happens? What happens to our radio system if we say we're not going to pay it? What happens to our radio system if we do pay it and then we submit bills to someone else for using our radio system? What happens? So there we are. I can tell you this, that this has been a two-year process coming, I just found this out on Friday. This has been a two-year process on behalf of Motorola. Why they have refused to say anything to Rankin County, I have no idea. But they've known about this mystery MOU missing for two years, which is why Ryan was sent here to Mississippi, because they knew this was coming, and we get it sprung on us, again, two weeks prior to submission of our budget, which is really neither here nor there in the grand scheme of things.
Are there options, are there options?
Oh, we have options. I don't know that any of them are good, but we have options, absolutely. Absolutely, we have options. Several on the table. And
I mean, how's this going to impact citizens of Rankin County?
Well, it's, right now, our radio system, our agreement that we have with our radio system is we have our six towers that we have. However, we also have the capacity to use the outlying outside of our county surrounding towers. MissWynn allows us to use that. So we have pretty good coverage in our county. If we were to separate and be on our own and not have any MissWynn capability whatsoever, then we are tied down to our six towers. We're going to have holes in the county. There's going to be places you're not going to be able to get out on radio.
Gotcha.
It is what it is. So there's some options. Craig and I spoke last week, and he's run some stuff by me, and I think he's got some avenues that we make and get some resolutions, and I'll let him speak to that. I don't want to dive off in that one.
As far as the monthly testing, I mean, are any storms that's going
We're two separate issues.
Okay, I got you.
Sirens is one issue. They claim they're going to make it right.
Mm-hmm.
I personally don't think that they can without a lot of money.
Okay.
I'm talking, when I say a lot of money, I'm talking probably half a million dollars on their part, and I, Mr. Slade's going to probably have to get involved in that one, too. So, well, let's not talk them over the edge. So, let them go as far as they can go. So, there we are. I don't know.
Thank you.
So, wait, hang on, I got a question for you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Why is it we are having to pay this? Does other counties have to pay?
Okay, so we own our own system. We own it. DeSoto County owns their own system. Part of Warren County and part of some other county, very few own either in whole or in part their system. Everybody else in the state of Mississippi uses the MissWynn system, meaning MissWynn has their own infrastructure everywhere. They use ours. If for some reason we were to tell MissWynn, we're out, y'all do your own thing, there will not be any Highway Patrol talking in Rankin County, no game wardens, no state people whatsoever, none. All the radios that they've got over at Whitfield, 100% of those folks are out because they're using our towers.
Right. That's no cost.
Do the counties that don't own their own towers, that MissWynn owns, do they pay a fee to MissWynn to use those towers?
No. To my knowledge, that answer is no.
So why did we make the decision to do our own?
That was well long ago.
I don't remember.
That was well before us.
Yeah.
I mean, where's MissWynn get their money from to pay the maintenance on their towers and stuff?
State, state fund?
It's appropriated by the state of Mississippi.
I think there's a surcharge associated with cell service usage and other things like that that supports that type of public communication, emergency communication.
So last week, we talked about this. You said if we decided to pull out, shut the state off, we're going to have gaps ourselves because we're not holding.
Yep. If the state says, okay, you kicked us out, we're going to shut off all the surrounding access to all the surrounding towers around your county. If they were to do that, then yes, we would have holes. Absolutely. Absolutely. We would have holes.
Makes sense to me like our best bet to say, here, y'all can have the system.
Ransom.
We have in excess of about 4,500 users on our system. The majority of those are not Rankin County people. The majority are not.
When you say, not, like they're state
State agencies?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, all right. I can't imagine DeSoto is real happy about this either, or Warren, did you say Warren has their own?
Warren has a partially owned, and they're kind of a mix between what they own and what MissWynn owns. And if you guys want, I'll go ahead and get Ryan teed up to come in here and speak with y'all where he can intelligently sit down with you and say, hey, if we do this, what happens to the radio system? And he can explain it beyond a shadow of a doubt.
Yeah.
Let's have some stuff, figures, and what, if we go this way, this is what it looks like if we go this way.
And MissWynn, a lot of this is dealing with the WCC as well. Depends on what their take is on it.
All right.
How they want to, who wants to tee it up and play ball.
Another $100,000 a year is not a cheap, so
No, sir. That's, you're looking at $400,000 in my small brain way of thinking, that's about a half a million dollars a year. So basically, you're telling me that this vehicle, our radio system, takes a half a million dollars in tune-ups and oil changes to even operate a year? That's pretty expensive in my book. Pretty expensive.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Craig, you had some more on these?
It's just executive session.
Oh.
All right, so I'll make a motion to go in executive session for land acquisition?
Probably acquisition.
I'll second.
All right. Daniel makes motion to go into executive session for land legal, and Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session.
Second.
Calhoun makes motion, Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.